Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee to Order for Monday, April 14th, 2025. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
Well, good evening, everyone. We almost made it. We got another, we got another three days left before April vacation. Sure, I know most people in my house are excited about that. Just a reminder that this meeting is being video and audio recorded by Dartmouth Community Television in partnership with the Dartmouth High Media Program and Mr. Paradi. As always, we thank them for their support. And this meeting will be rebroadcast on DCTV, Channels 9 on the following days, Wednesday and Thursday at 5:00 p.m., Friday at 6:00 a.m., Saturday at 8:00 a.m., and Sunday at 2:00 p.m. The meeting will also be rebroadcast on DCTV, Channel 18, on the following days, Monday and Saturday at 12:00 p.m. and Thursday at 3:00 p.m. And as always, you can find us on the Dartmouth High Media Program, Media YouTube Channel. Roll call, please, Ms. Gantner.
Kathleen Amorall?
Here.
John Nunes?
Yep.
Mary Beckwith?
Here.
Beth Coughlin?
Here.
Chris Oliver?
Here. Thank you very much. Just a reminder, please silence any electronic devices that you may have at this time. So with that said, next up, we have public comment. At this point, we typically allow approximately 10 minutes for anyone wishing to speak on any of tonight's agenda items. If you wish to speak on anything relating to the agenda, we ask you to please approach the microphone, state your name, and please limit your comments to around three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Nathan Silva, and I'm not about to break my streak now, so I'm here to talk about the budget. But what I want to say is that I'm pleased, right? I'm pleased that, of the plan that was presented at the last school committee meeting, to reduce our reliance on the savings account to fund our operating expenses, right? I think it's a smart plan and one that has minimal impact on the overall finances of the town. So I want to publicly say that I'm pleased with that, as well as encourage the Select Board and the Finance Committee to endorse that plan and for town meeting to pass it. However, I want to be crystal clear that this plan does not solve all of the problems for the schools, right? It solves one problem. I think despite this plan, we are still going to be among the least funded school systems in the entire state. Despite this plan, our teacher-to-student ratio, our teacher's assistant-to-student ratio, our administrator-to-student ratio is still going to be higher than the state average in the wrong direction. And in every measurable category, despite this plan, the Dartmouth Public School System is among the least funded school systems in the state. That doesn't change with this plan. So while I'm appreciative of the plan that's in place that, and hopeful that it will be passed at the town meeting level, there's still a lot of work to do to get the schools what they need to do the job that we've asked them to do, which is to educate our children. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christine Pankowski. I have two children at Dartmouth DeMello. Both of my children went to Cushman for kindergarten. My daughter was in 21, 22, and my son was a few years later, in 23, 24. They had very different experiences. Why, you might ask? How did it change so much in two years? What happened? The answer is simple. It's a reduction of teachers. The reduction of teachers has a domino effect. Larger classes, behavior problems, poor communication, loss of trust, decrease in teacher morale, and ineffective learning. As mentioned at previous meetings, the budget is a reflection of our community's values. We are doing our young people a disservice by allowing this consistent reduction of staff. I know it was mentioned at the last meeting that these are teachers who are retiring, but I also know that it was mentioned that these are teachers who are retiring and they are not being replaced. I think that that's really important. Our job is to advocate for the students, not propose a budget which compromises their best interests. Our children should be our community's number-one priority. That's it. Thank you.
All right, seeing no one approaching the microphone, we're going to move out of public comment and into the approval of minutes. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the regular session minutes of March 24th, 2025.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Amorall, second by Mr. Nunes on the motion, any further discussion? Chair hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Time chair will entertain a motion to approve the executive session minutes of March 24th, 2025.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, with the stipulation may be held until the matter for which they were intended is completed.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nunes, second by Ms. Beckwith on the motion, any further discussion? Chair hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. It's time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Saban McGuire, spotlight on kids, Dartmouth High School.
Oh.
We have our student work tonight.
Oh, hello. And I have this right, I have this right over here, highlighted for me, and I still missed it. Well, good evening, Audrey. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
And at this time, if you'd like to provide us with your report.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Audrey Kircher, and I'm a senior at Dartmouth High School. So we, as many of you know, we just started quarter four at the high school, and we are heading into April break. Despite the current rain recently, our spring sports, they have started out very strong, which is very good, especially when looking at our Dartmouth spirit. Additionally, the Dartmouth High School Theater Company is presenting High School Musical on May 1st through May 3rd. Tickets are available for purchase online, and I would highly recommend coming. It's going to be a great show. Also, our BIT department is hosting a career fair tomorrow, Tuesday, April 15th. This is a great opportunity for students to explore internship options and potential summer employment. This is for underclassmen, juniors, sophomores, and freshmen. Also, Student Council's Spring Bowl fundraiser is still open. Purchasing information has been posted on Parent Square, and 50% of all proceeds go to the Student Council. That supports giving back to DHS and the Dartmouth community. We have raised a good amount of money so far, and this money also goes towards Student Council being able to attend a leadership conference every March. So it's, it's a very important cause, and if you're interested in buying flowers, I'd definitely recommend it. Also, our after-prom committee is hosting two upcoming fundraisers. On April 29th, there's a dine-in or takeout from Cask &amp; Pig, and 20% of the bill will be donated to supporting after-prom. And the other fundraiser is going to be held on Saturday, May 10th. It will be a wicked sing-along here at the high school, and information for both events can be found on Parent Square. The annual 13th pre-K 12 through 12 art show is being held on Thursday, May 8th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Dartmouth High School. Each school in the district is having their students' art showcased, so it's a really great opportunity to come and see what the students from every grade level have been up to and have been creating in their art classes. And lastly, once we return from April break, the seniors will have 22 days left of school, and we have several very fun events that are planned for after April break that we are all very excited for. Thank you for taking the time to recognize us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. Questions?
Good question, Cask &amp; Pig. If I don't have the chop cook or clean, I'm in, I'm in. Is there a flyer, or is that on the Parent Square, or do you know?
Yes, information has been posted on Parent Square, I believe, with that.
Oh, boy. Okay. Thank you.
Can help you out with that, Mr. Nunes.
Thank you.
As always, thank you for your report, and you're welcome to stick along, stick around, or head out if you need to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think at this point in the agenda, we're ready for spotlight on kids.
So, thank you, Mr. Oliver. So I'm going to invite Mr. Shea up. I know that Dartmouth High School, this evening Dartmouth High School will be spotlighting the Spectrum Podcast. This is a division of the student newspaper. I do have to say that I did have an opportunity last year, not, not this year yet, but that might just have gotten me in trouble because I'm probably going to get invited now. No, it was really fun to sit with our students, and I can say that there's a really committed group of our students who have done some really great work this year, and they're going to tell you some of the highlights of who they've had an opportunity to interview.
Thank you. I have Michael and Andrew here. Our host, Annika, is in a tennis match right now. She was hoping to make it back, and there's a few others on tennis and sports. So we're kind of, the thing about our students is they're super involved. The thing about our students is they're super involved, so, which is great. So we really wanted to spotlight our Spectrum Podcast. They've done some incredible things over the course of the last few years and as they've been developing and growing. And they really get into that strategic plan, especially that pride side, and you're going to see even stuff like that, that Portrait of a Learner, stuff that comes out with the communication and stuff that we're really proud of, of what they have done as a crew. So our Spectrum Podcast, if you don't, if you have not been on Spotify, or if you have Spotify, I highly recommend you like and subscribe, as they say, to it, because every Friday, I get an alert that there's a new podcast that drops, and I get really excited, and that's my car ride home. So I highly recommend you all do that before we begin. Just a history, it's a student-led newspaper, it's a spectrum, this is a division of the newspaper. It's led by Mr. Higgins, who teaches a class at UMass, that's why he's not here. But it's really a conversation around daily lives impacting students, both at DHS internally and externally. As it started, it was, four years ago, it was really an experiment to improve interviewing skills. And anyone, I don't know if there are podcast aficionados like me, I really love them, it's just a great long conversation. And I think they have modeled it really well in how they're prepared and their, what they've worked on the last year is like that follow-up question. How do you follow up? You come with scripted questions, but someone puts this little nugget out that you want to follow up and, and go there. It was initially designed to be internal, just, just the day lives of DHS, and it has branched into topics and people who are interested in getting to know each other. And they've had three hosts over the last four years. So I had to edit that this morning, because, or this afternoon, because I was told two this morning, and luckily, Annika corrected me as we went over this, yes, this afternoon. Just some interesting details, there was a famous DYA interview that somehow never ran because of a recording error, but I don't know if you know this, but our students, even our high school, our top athletes still love playing like DYA sports, and it was really just how they're passionate about it and what the league offers for them. So there's, I guess there's an internal joke about how they lost this beautiful podcast. They use Spotify to help with the editing tools, it's free, it's been really supportive of them. It's crazy how they turn around. I remember interviewing with them, I do, I always start the year with them, and by the time I got home, I had the, had it on my phone already. So they zoomed into France this year, which was pretty cool for an interview. The design is simple and intentional, it's designed to be that way. They do one mic, and it walks around. It, it limits the edits, and it's an authentic conversation. And it's the start, it's a highlight to how I start every year. I really do. I think I tell you guys every time, I, I super look forward to it. So what do they do for interviews? They have different topics. So they do clubs and teams, they've done the sailing team, hockey team, TEDx, debate, math, theater company, they do student life, they do a live event at the prep rally, they talk about dances, they've interviewed the exchange students over in France, the cafeteria updates, and there's some student perspective. And then they interview staff. So they interviewed me, Ms. Burningham, Dr. Seig McGuire, Mr. Kylie got interviewed one time. Then they talk about pop culture, so they interviewed Mr. Cody just a little bit. For anyone who knows, that's our teachers going to Hollywood. They do a yearly Met Gala recap, they did a summer movie preview once, and then they've done dignitaries too. And so they've done state reps, Christopher Markey, they did MIA director Bob Baldwin, they did school committee members in the past, and then they did Sheriff Paul Herault. So they've really reached out to, and broadened it. And according to Mr. Higgins, that's really Annika this year, trying to reach out to get more people to, from the outside, to share their perspectives and their impact. So I want to thank Michael today, because he edited a, this is a sample, about five minutes of three conversations that our students had. Hold on. I'm going to take over? I'm not, I mean, not taking over? It worked this afternoon, we tested it, I promise you all. Don't I do it wrong, Mr. Paradi?
There comes the help.
We're just going to go to the hard file?
Yeah.
This was our worst-case scenario when we were testing it this afternoon, is that we have a backup.
Yeah, almost exactly a year ago from right now, I got a message on Reddit from a man claiming to be Aaron Folby, this Hollywood producer.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I actually ignored it.
You have audio there? So while we're waiting, do we have questions that maybe we want to ask our, our students here?
Well, I'll at least introduce my role. So I'm associate editor of the paper.
Microphone.
I'm associate editor of the paper. It's my second year on the paper, so I was a staff writer previously, and then this year I was associate editor. I'm kind of like Annika's number two. We were assisted, were assisted by two assistant editors as well, and then in addition to that, we have 11, well, 10 staff writers, and then one game maker and one cartoonist.
Sort of writing representation.
So the games and the cartoons is something that we added this year, and it was a good addition. So that's a little bit about what we do, in addition to writing. So we have the podcast, we have the cartoon, and then we have the games as well, so.
Excellent.
I'm Mikey. I am a staff writer. I'm a senior. I joined this year. I'm not super big into writing, but joining this club has kind of led me to write more, so I've been getting better at it. And mostly, I just joined the Spectrum because everyone in the club is super cool, and I really, really enjoy being around them, and that's like the only reason I joined. But I have a lot of fun, especially because I'm more on the media side, and so we kind of combine the newspaper and our media thing. So I, I think this club is super fun, and I'm really glad we're being spotlighted tonight.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, almost exactly a year ago from right now, I got a message on Reddit from a man claiming to be Aaron Folby, this Hollywood producer. Yeah, yeah, and I, I actually ignored it. I, I didn't even reply to it. And he double messaged me and said, hey, man, just checking in to see if you got my message. And I then rejected him and told him, oh, I'm just a, a public educator, you know, I don't need any sort of writing representation. I figured he'd be some sort of fake agent asking for, for money or something. And then he said, trust me, you're going to want to get on the phone with me. So I said to my girlfriend, okay, as long as I don't give him my social security number, I guess I can hear him out. And then that night, I got on the Zoom call, and as soon as it started and I saw his face, my head exploded. I think Aaron spoke for two, no, we were on the phone for two hours. I think he spoke for like an hour fifty-five of it, and the rest of it was just me going, mhm, okay, yep. And we got off the phone, and I just, it was like I, I took my first breath in hours, and I was like, what the heck just happened? So.
What I would say is, I think in principle, the MCAS is an important thing to have, you know, an important structure to have within our education system. I just think that we don't do the right thing with it. I was a late bloomer in learning, and probably not until law school, but how I think MCAS should be used and utilized is more on the growth of the student. two new elementary schools and a new athletic turf field because we never gave up and it was for kids and it was for the greater good. If I went with the popularity contest, I would have sat in a, you know, in a position in my room somewhere all curled up. Um, we built a school, we, w- we had to close a school that was built in eighteen eighty-five that was, um, put together by our town benefactor, but it wasn't servicing kids. And I remember there was a thousand people who wrote a petition saying, you cannot build a new school and shut down this elementary school. And it won by like sixty-four votes. But to this day, people love that new elementary school. And had we listened to the noise from the outside, well-respected noise, but nonetheless, not for the greater good of the future of kids, we would have stopped progress for our kids. So what message are we sending that you just can't fail anymore? And I think it's good to fail. I think failing is positive and you learn so much more about yourself as a human being when you lose a heartbreaker or something doesn't go your way. And I just don't know if society is not allowing us to grow and fail and struggle and know that, you know, I knew I wasn't good enough to play basketball in high school. I experienced it. I loved it and I stayed on the team. But, um, I don't, you know, maybe I'm being, I'm, I'm a dinosaur talking, you know, as an older person, but I don't think so. I think deep down people know. And I think that, um, false expectations, false hopes, too much too soon and the inability to allow people to fail. And then it's the person in the crowd who sees the kid not play who starts yelling at the coach. Or the person in the crowd who sees the bad call who says, my kid isn't gonna go further because of this. And no, whatever's gonna happen's gonna happen. Let it happen and learn from it.
So I think it's been great with the chef coming in. I know a lot of you got to meet him, um, last Wednesday and I'm sure you all noticed he is extremely high energy. He's the same when he's teaching a class. So if you can picture him standing in front of a class of people, he's that same energy. It was hilarious. We were, we were laughing the whole time, but learning a lot. Um, he's not only teaching us the lesson, it's like any little side things that come in. He's like, oh, let me show you that. Let me show you this. Um, my salad, um, prep person was there the day of the training. He took her off to the side and he was showing her better ways to cut onions so she's not crying every time and, and, and better ways to peel the cucumbers so you don't lose quite as much and all things like that. So he's, he's been great. It's been phenomenal. It's not just learning the lesson that's right there. You're learning a lot of techniques, which is really nice. Um, and I love the idea of, you know, branching out and bringing in new things, but yet keeping it to things that the kids like, which is why we started with that, um, Asian fusion, cause I've noticed since I first started, you guys kinda like Asian. Anytime we do kind of an Asian themed type of thing, we have a, a lot of people coming over to the mainline. So it's kind of that, that nice branch of learning a better, healthier way of doing something that you guys already like.
So what you don't hear in that is, um, the amazing questions and the research our students do ahead of time. I kinda just whispered to Andrew, cause I remember someone asking a question and I thought it was him and it was. Um, when Dr. Baldwin sits down, the first question they ask him about his grandfather's national prayer station. And the, he was so impressed and floored by the depth of the research that our students had done. And that is very, very common with every coast. You know, the depth of the MCAS questions that they ask and, and they keep going deeper. I really cannot encourage enough. Listen, ask to be part of the show. It's really fun. It's a good time. It's, uh, Fridays during pace and there, it's a really great experience. I want these guys to talk for the rest of the night, though.
Yeah, Mr. News?
Yeah, I think, when does, when does the paper come out?
So typically we, um, we put out like blasts on Mondays. So we, we assign articles like at meetings. Uh, u- usually when we're not doing a podcast meeting, we have like what we call a regular meeting and we'll, uh, talk about ideas of things that are going on. We'll kinda assign articles to various peoples and, and the club. Um, and then we put out the blasts usually on, on, uh, Mondays. And through that, then that's when people usually get an email that's like, hey, come check out the website and see what's new.
All right. So it's on the school website?
Uh, no. So it's, uh, DartmouthHighSchoolSpectrum.com if you wanted to check it out.
Okay.
DHSSpectrum.com.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Nice job.
Um, along this line, so the podcasts, is it every Friday that you have a new one? It couldn't possibly be.
So, yeah. No, it's usually, we try to shoot for twice a month. It doesn't always come out that way, but that's what we try to do, so.
So then when you do your blasts on Monday, you'll alert people if there's a new podcast?
Uh, right, yeah.
Or is that how you find out?
Yeah, that'll be included in the, in the, uh, week, like that weekly email. Yeah.
It's on the website.
Yeah. I, I'm totally impressed. You guys are ready to make a lot of money. Well, actually, media, I don't know, journalists. But, yeah, very competent.
So from start to finish, how long does it take to create a podcast? From developing the questions to the actual interview to the post-editing?
I would say...
Few hours.
Um, so the actual podcast takes around thirty minutes. We just do it during pace. Um, but I, I think our s- staff writers and our editors definitely put a lot of time into research and developing questions, um, throughout the week before the podcast happens. Um, so I would say maybe a couple hours and I'm not really sure how much editing Mr. Higgins does before he posts it. Um, but I think he adds some intro music and then he posts it. It's really not a ton. It's super simple, but I think it's really fun and effective.
Thank you.
How do you make the decision to, uh, of the topics that you're gonna have on the po- podcasts?
Well, I would say it really just, it starts as a conversation. It's like, I remember one time, Mr. Shea was actually walking through the room when we were, uh, discussing what we might do the next week. And, uh, we were talking about, you know, all the things that were going on in the sports world and different changes on the national level, state level. And we were like, what if we brought in, uh, the director of the MIA? Because he was a former, um, uh, superintendent of Fairhaven, so he knew he was a local guy. And Mr. Shea was walking through and he was like, oh, I'll, I'll contact him. We'll see what he says. And, um, that's, that's how that one went. But most of the time, it's usually a conversation, like, do you think that we could get this person to come do a podcast? And then we kinda just reach out and it's usually how it goes.
Very cool.
Great. Thank you.
Anyone else?
No, I'm just super impressed. I, uh, I don't really have a question, cause I don't know enough about it to formulate something meaningful, but, uh, really impressed with just your engagement and all of your work. And I love how, Mikey, the collaboration between like that media side and that whatever podcast side, but, and writing side. Um, it's just a beautiful thing and I'm sure it'll come in handy, whether you move into a field that you're utilizing those skills, just having them really will add to your, um, what you have to offer the world, which is pretty amazing.
And I think the best part is, um, because it, it'll, it only takes one student to write an article, to spend a week doing a little research and then publishing the article. Um, and I think it's helpful to keep our student body more informed. Obviously, not every single student checks out our email blast every week. Um, but some people do. I think one of our highest viewed articles right now is about the torn, the census article?
The, the next census.
Is about the next, next, uh, the twenty thirty census, which I have absolutely no idea about. And that's not something I'm, you know, gonna go look up on my own. Uh, but one of our staff writers, Levi, wrote a amazing article about it. And I think now it's one of our most viewed articles. So people are now finding out and like learning more than they would themselves. And I think that's super amazing.
Yeah, about important things. Yeah, thank you.
Certainly very cool. We wanna thank you both, uh, for taking the time to come here this evening and for, uh, sharing a little bit about, uh, the podcasts and what you guys do. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shea. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, next up, before we move on to, uh, the school improvement plan presentation, I do wanna just turn it over to our superintendent of schools for just a minute. And, uh, she has an important announcement, uh, to share with everyone.
I do. So I want to invite, first I wanna invite Dr. Thomas up to the podium. I tried to give you the signal, Dr. Thomas. Tried to get you the, oh, are you coming in? Oh, I see.
Mrs. Y.
Mrs. Y is also coming up and they're going to introduce our new assistant principal from the Quinn School, who we're so excited to welcome here this evening.
Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, Mrs. Yer milovich and I just wanted to thank Dr. Sabre McGuire and Mr. Kylie for all of your support this year. We do still have three amazing retired administrators that help us throughout the week. Valerie Brower, Karen McCarthy and Darren Doan, who have come out of retirement to help us this year. Um, and they just jumped right in. So we're very, very grateful.
And they've loved every minute of it.
We've loved them too. But we are absolutely thrilled to introduce Dr. Rebecca Hurley, who is, um, coming July first. And Rebecca has her doctorate in education from Northeastern University with a concentration in curriculum, teaching, learning and leadership. Uh, she's been in the Somerset School District, and now we've got her, since two thousand and five. So she's been there quite a long time and I know that's like family to her. Um, but we're very excited that she's going to be coming here to Dartmouth. She's taught grades one, two, three. Uh, she was a reading specialist, an instructional coach. Um, and most recently, for the last three years, she's been the assistant principal at the South Elementary School in Somerset. And we're very, very excited for her to join our team. We think she's gonna be a great fit. So we're very excited to welcome her this evening.
Hi, all. Good evening. I am very excited to join the administrative team, uh, here in Dartmouth at Quinn Elementary. Um, as Audra had said, I, um, am concluding twenty years of service for the town of Somerset and I, um, take that very seriously, but I am looking forward to that next step in my professional career to grow as an educational leader here in Dartmouth. Um, I know in a big school comes the big challenge of learning as many faces of staff and students and their families. Um, so I hope to be a quick study this summer with the benefit of Aspen and student pictures and matching up as many names as I can before the first day of school. Um, but I'm just very grateful for the opportunities that await me here in Dartmouth. So thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and welcome to Dartmouth. All right, we'll leave it, leave it with you.
Right, I get to...
Continuing right along.
Yes, and, um, I'm pleased to invite up to the podium, Mr. Porter. And I think, yep, and I see our new, our incoming principal headed this way, Ms. McHenry. So I have to say, before Mr. Porter starts to talk about the school improvement plan, this is Mr. Porter's last time presenting a school improvement plan here in Dartmouth. Mr. Porter, congratulations on that. But have no worries, because Mrs. McHenry's right beside him, ready to take over.
I would say a few years ago was the last time I, um, introduced a school improvement plan. I will not be doing that tonight because this school improvement plan is actually...
Oh, I see you turning it right over. Wow, good for you.
Mama did not raise a fool, so. No, um, but before, um, Melissa speaks, um, if you will just indulge me here, so. So good evening, everyone. And like I said, before Melissa does the sit presentation tonight, I realize this will probably be, probably, you have another meeting before June, but the last time I'll speak before the school committee. After thirty-five years here in Dartmouth, I am retiring at the end of the school year. And if you will just indulge me just a couple of minutes, there's a few people I'd like to thank. My sincere appreciation is to the members of the school committee, past and present. Your unwavering support over the years has meant the world to me. Your dedication to the students and educators here in Dartmouth has always been evident and this community is so fortunate to have all of you as their representatives. I also want to express my sincere gratitude to the many superintendents, and there have been many, and central office administrators, including June and Jim, that I've worked with during my time here. Each one has brought their own leadership and vision and I'm thankful for the trust and collaboration we have shared to work together to make Dartmouth a place where students and educators thrive. To the incredible staff at Bush Street, and I'm really, I'm looking at Kate right now, thank you, thank you, thank you. Without your dedication and hard work, none of our successes would have been possible. You've all assisted me in so many ways during my years as an assistant principal and principal. You are the district's unsung heroes. So I would like to thank you all. I also wanna thank my colleagues at Potter School and at the Quinn School. Yes, I was at the Quinn School for six years. You have been more than just fellow educators. You have been my support system, my sounding board and my friends. You have made a lasting impact on the lives of so many students and I couldn't have asked for a better group of people to work alongside. I truly believe that the relationships we have built have made our schools something special. And we've had a lot of fun along the way. A lot of fun. To the entire Dartmouth community, the parents, the students and families, thank you for the trust you've placed in me and the Dartmouth Public Schools. I will always cherish the connections I've made within the many neighborhoods of Dartmouth, from classroom teacher to school administrator. Thank you for welcoming and adopting this new Bedford boy into your community so many years ago. Maureen, don't tell the willing city, but I think I now bleed green, so. But as I step aside, it's with great confidence that I pass the leadership of our school to Melissa McHenry. Melissa has been a wonderful partner over the years and I've witnessed firsthand her dedication to our school and our community. The importance of a good partner in this role cannot be overstated. A strong partnership is at the heart of every successful school and I know that Melissa will continue to build on the foundation that we have worked so hard to grow. A foundation that has thrived from years to some amazing partnerships of past administrators at Potter School. I look forward to hearing all about the wonderful things that Melissa will do at Potter and I have every confidence that she will lead with the same compassion, dedication and expertise that she has shown throughout our time working together. So I just wanna thank everyone. It's been an honor to work in Dartmouth and it's been an incredible journey and I will miss you. Thank you very much. So as my last act, Melissa will introduce the school improvement plan.
But before I do that, oh, it's tough to be sure. Okay, here we go. I would just like to take a moment to thank Rick Porter for his leadership and dedication to the Potter School and the larger Dartmouth School community for so many years. His guidance and support have been invaluable to me, both professionally and personally. As I present, present our school improvement plan to the school committee, I do so with deep appreciation for the mentorship he has provided and the collaborative spirit he has always fostered within our school community. Thank you, Rick, for your time at Potter and for the lasting impact you've made. I look forward to continuing our work, cause guess what? It's not till July first. Um, the last few months together, so thank you. All right. Moving on to our school improvement plan, which I'm excited to present this evening. So hopefully the spacebar works. Excellent. So, the Potter School Improvement Plan is rooted in our District Improvement Plan, which is why I share this slide with you. So I had the pleasure of being one of the members of the Strategic Planning Committee, which developed the District Improvement Plan. So I was excited about that work and looking forward to the opportunity to bring it to the Potter School. So this evening, I'm gonna focus on the strategic focus areas of teaching and learning, safe and supportive schools, family and community engagement, budget and capital improvements, and what our action steps at Potter will be. So beginning with teaching and learning and our focus as a district on the vertical and horizontal alignment of curriculum. Here at Potter, uh, we will be implementing next year the new CKLA language arts curriculum in our K- to five classrooms. So I'm looking forward to that work. And I do wanna give a shout out to some of our teachers who this year have piloted this program to start this work. So in kindergarten, we have Mrs. Frias. In first grade, we have Ms. Veloso. In second grade, we have Mrs. Pimental. Third grade, Ms. Olivera. developed the District Improvement Plan, so I was excited about that work and looking forward to the opportunity to bring it to the Potter School. So, this evening, I'm going to focus on the strategic focus areas of teaching and learning, safe and supportive schools, family and community engagement, budget and capital improvements, and what our action steps at Potter will be. So, beginning with teaching and learning, and our focus as a district on the vertical and horizontal alignment of curriculum. Here at Potter, we will be implementing next year the new CKLA Language Arts Curriculum in our K-5 classrooms, so I'm looking forward to that work, and I do want to give a shout out to some of our teachers who this year have piloted this program to start this work. So, in kindergarten, we have Mrs. Frias. In first grade, we have Ms. Veloso. In second grade, we have Mrs. Pimental. Third grade, Ms. Olivera. Fourth grade, Ms. Karen, and fifth grade, Ms. Sullivan. So, thank you for your hard work, because you actually piloted two pieces of curriculum, so you really worked hard this year. So, we look forward to moving ahead this coming year. Along with that work, another action step involves us creating an instructional schedule that supports a more personalized learning experience, or what we're calling a WIN block, which stands for What I Need. This will ensure that all students will receive the appropriate level of support or enrichment. So, what we're looking to do is have our intervention schedules very flexible, including both an inclusion and pull-out support, getting our related service providers, as well as our special education teachers, to support the implementation of the CKLA curriculum. Our third action step is to establish a school-wide focus on improving the verbal and written language skills of all students across all academic settings. So, you may wonder where that's coming from, which we'll get into in the next action step, but taking a look at some of our data this school year, we've noticed that we've had an increase in speech and language screenings in our school. So, typically, when we get a speech screen, it's involving articulation, so when students are struggling with, you know, making a certain sound. But what we've noticed over the last couple of years is a lot of our speech screens are coming in very language-based, so students are having some struggle with vocabulary, or getting their thoughts out in a complete thought, or their writing in a complete sentence. So, we'd like to have a school-wide focus on that this year, and we're excited that with the CKLA curriculum, that will help support a lot of this work, because there's a great focus on vocabulary and language development within that curriculum. The last action step for this particular slide is we'd like to improve student outcomes by establishing a dedicated data team and a consistent schedule for data analysis. So, we've already done some of this work this year, and we do have established a data team. We've met a couple of times already this year, and that's a mix of classroom teachers, interventionists, and coaches, and we meet and we look at the data from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year and some of our progress monitoring data, and we look for patterns and trends, and what are our interventions look like? Are those the best interventions to get to what we're looking for, because we really want to be targeted? And that data team is what sort of found the information related to the previous action step about the oral language skills. So, we want to sort of increase that a little bit next year by saying that we are going to create a schedule as part of our year-long schedule, where our data team is going into PLCs with our teachers to talk about that data. And we do that very informally right now, but we really want to formalize that system to make sure that that's happening, and we're including teachers, and really getting the teachers, interventionists, and special education teachers together to help build that collective efficacy across the school. So, moving on, still in teaching and learning, and looking at our professional development opportunities across the school, our first action step related here is to foster peer observations and coaching opportunities to support our CKLA implementation. We've begun some of that work over the last month or so, where we're having classroom teachers who didn't pilot the CKLA program go into the classrooms of the teachers that did and begin to observe what that looks like, and then they reflect on it after their observation. So, that's sort of something we've started, and we'd like to continue to do that next year. The next action step is to develop a look-for tool that empowers teachers to assess the effectiveness of not only our CKLA curriculum, but also our whole literacy block. So, when we say a look-for tool, what we mean is a guide that helps identify the key elements of the curriculum and how successful those elements are, and whether or not we need to build some PD around any of those pieces. And lastly, and I think one that's very important, and a lot of times we focus on the things that aren't going so well, but I add in an action step here to recognize and celebrate the professional growth of our educators. This is important work. It's hard work, and we need to celebrate that hard work, and including when, you know, someone steps out of their comfort box for a minute and tries something new. I think we need to celebrate that. So, I'm looking to build that in as something that is part of our process and part of our day, every day of the year, and also taking that and encouraging teachers to do some professional development within the school, based on things that they've tried and what they've learned from those trials. So, that is teaching and learning. So, under the focus area two, safe and supportive schools, when we're talking about building the capacity of our students and staff for their social-emotional wellness, our first action step is related to collaborating with the behavior coach, to expand our use of proactive behavior management strategies, fostering social-emotional learning, and providing targeted support to our students. So, we do thank you as a School Committee for allowing us to add a behavior coach into the district. That has been extremely important, particularly for us here at Potter. She has been a wonderful, Lisa Gibson, shout out to her. She has been a wonderful resource to us, I know for myself personally, to take a look at a different lens to help support behavior. Sometimes we were in it so long, we have our certain way, and she has brought some new ideas and fresh ideas, so we are excited to continue that partnership with her. So, the next action step is related to utilizing our SWISS data. So, if you don't know what SWISS data is, that's the behavior data that we collect, that we receive from classroom teachers or from ourselves if we're working with students. We take a look at that, and in the past, we've looked again at students who may need a little extra support, tier-two support in a, with a particular behavior or social-emotional concern that they may have. So, we've been doing that, but what I want to do is go to the next level by creating a progress monitoring schedule for that, just like we do for academic data. So, you know, we always do progress monitoring for reading skills and math skills. Well, I'd like to, you know, implement something related to our behavior data and social-emotional, so we'll know that if we're putting a student on check-in, check-out, for example, that that's actually giving us the benefits that we're hoping it would. And the last one on this slide is to establish and implement a peer mentoring program to provide students with personalized social and emotional support through peer-to-peer interactions. So, shout out to our two school counselors, Carrie Gregor and Paul Schwinnard, who will help implement this. What we're looking for here is to gather students who consistently show empathy and kindness and responsibility, and use them to help some, to support students who may not. So, for example, you know, having some recess rangers, where students go out and they encourage inclusion, and if they see a student without someone to play with, they could help gather or get a game going to help support that student during recess. Or something on the idea of kindness captains, where the staff gives out Catch Me at My Best slips for students who are pausing to be kind, safe, and a learner. Those are our expectations. So, we would empower our students to look for those things within their own peer group. So, that's sort of our work in that area. Continuing with safe and supportive schools, we'd also like to establish a fifth-grade leadership program to empower our students with the skills, knowledge, and confidence to take on leadership roles in the school. So, the idea there is, you know, for them to meet with me and sort of initiate and lead some school-wide activities throughout the school, hoping for more student engagement and improved student interaction, utilizing that SWISS data to show that. And the last one for that one is increasing opportunities for students to engage in productive problem-solving. So, what we're looking for there is for students to grapple with a problem, whether it's a math problem, or, you know, a word problem of some sort, or some research that they're doing, to do some productive problem-solving, to deepen their understanding of a topic. It also would build resilience and perseverance. It would encourage critical thinking, and it would prepare students for real-world challenges, so that students are becoming less reliant on the adult coming in and solving the problem, but building their skills to do so. Continuing under safe and supportive schools, we're always looking to improve our safety practices across the school. So, again, our SEL team, which includes our school counselors, Carrie Gregor, Paul Schwinnard, and Caitlin Kalbeck, our school psychologist, we meet and schedule, and they work with students on the safety drills throughout the school, and we're constantly taking a look at those, and where do we need to improve, where's something we need to add. We're collecting staff and student feedback after those drills, so we're always looking to improve our effectiveness and updating our protocols. Just to give you an example of some of the work that we've already done, is we've, this year, we've added a reverse evacuation drill, so students who are playing outside on the playground, how would they get in? And just in doing some of those things, we, you know, received some feedback from staff, who, you know, our third-grade team, for example, has doors facing the playground, so they're an important part of that reverse evacuation, because they're another door that a child can come in through. So, that was one example, and another piece of feedback that we received was some of our younger students, when we were going over the intercom and we're saying, you know, we're practicing, okay, there's an intruder in the building, and they're over by the connector door in the second-grade wing. Some of our littlest learners may not know what that second-grade wing, they don't know where second grade is, they just know how to get to their classroom. So, we now connect it to an area that all schools, all students would know. So, for example, moving forward, we would say, by the library, or the hallway near the library, because all of our students visit the library, so they would know where that was. So, that's some of the feedback that we receive, which helps us tweak our protocols. Under family and community engagement, the district's goal is to develop and implement a district-wide communication plan. So, what does that look like at the Potter School? So, we're hoping to set a clear, predictable schedule for communication. We hear a lot from parents, they're inundated with emails or Parent Square messages. So, if we're clear and we're predictable, so for example, we do a monthly newsletter. If we, you know, make it clearer and more predictable that the first of every month is when that newsletter is going to come out, then parents or families know, I'm going to look for that the first day of the month, versus, you know, trying to look in all their emails. They know right where to go. We're also looking to use multiple channels for communication, like email, newsletter, Parent Square, and parent-teacher meetings, but helping parents know, this is where, this is the information that goes through email. This would be the information you'd find in a newsletter. So, just really delineating where they would find all of this information. And lastly there, I'd like to establish a principal's coffee hour. It's something I did do at Cushman School, which was obviously a much smaller school, but I did rather enjoy that, and it just created a more open, relaxed setting for parents to come in. I used to do them either in the morning or in the afternoon. Sometimes I would do them over Zoom, just to give a variety of times to make it available for working families or families with different schedules, and I really just think it helps to build trust, it builds transparency, you have that community connection with your families, and it's also a way for me to gather valuable insights. So, I'm looking forward to trying that at Potter. Continuing with family and community engagement, and establishing and strengthening those relationships with our families, I'd like to sort of enhance the volunteer opportunities for parents and families to come into the building. I would start by offering a volunteer training, which is something that we had done at the Quinn School together, and I also continued at Cushman, just to have parents come in across multiple areas in the school, so not even necessarily in their child's classroom, but maybe another classroom, maybe outside at recess, maybe in the cafeteria, maybe in the library. So, just some different areas, multiple areas that they can be a part of our school community. And the last one there is to increase our community participation in school events and programs. We do have rather large participation in our PTO meetings, when we have a bingo night, an art night, things like that, but I'd like to extend that a little bit, where families can come in, and we're sort of like a resource hub for them. So, it might be a night where we're talking about our ELA instruction or our math instruction, and what could you do at home to support that? We all know the new math. I was just with a fifth grader the other day. I didn't know how she was doing her multiplication, not much different than how I learned. So, you imagine what the parents are going through. So, having that ability to bring parents in for things like that, and we've done a little bit of that with our PTO meetings, but it limits sort of the time that we're able to do it, because it's a part of an agenda, so this would be something, you know, much more extensive. And then lastly, under budget and capital improvements, so obviously communicating and advocating for the instructional and operational needs of the district is the District Improvement Plan, so obviously at the school level, that would be for our school, and what our needs are and how they directly impact student achievement and operations. So, working with, collaborating with our district leaders in order to do that. Also within this, to explore all potential funding resources, whether that's district funds or if it's grants or community partnerships, and we've done, we've already started some of this work. We use, we partner with the Feinstein program, and that has brought in some money for us to do some outdoor learning tables and things, so continuing that work. And this year, I've been on fire with the scholastic dollars that we receive from our book fair. It really does help offset the costs of some, you know, some things, like books, or, you know, wobbly stools is always a big one that teachers are looking for, and those are great ways to offset those costs. So, just keeping that open mind and looking for those other opportunities to locate some funds. We want to continue to use our budget to expand the outdoor learning spaces. I'd love to see more picnic tables out there. Our students enjoy them. We also have a fabulous garden, which we'd like to expand, that provides great, it's a great resource for math skills, and they're out there measuring, so looking for other ways to get students outdoors. And we just recently purchased a lending library, so we're hoping to put that outside as well. And lastly, when you talk about budget and money, it's important to create a schedule within your building, and we've started that this year, where you're always meeting with your building secretary, at least monthly, to talk about, all right, what funds have we used? Are we using them efficiently and planned, and do we need to adjust for any unforeseen costs or needs that arise? So, those meetings are important to keep everyone in the loop. So, I know that was kind of fast, but hopefully I was able to give you an overview, and I'd be happy, or Mr. Porter, to take any questions.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for taking the reins on your School Improvement Plan presentation, Mrs. McHenry, and congratulations on 35 dedicated years to the Dartmouth School System, Mr. Porter. So, we wish you, I wish you well in all your future endeavors. You will sorely be missed. In regards to the School Improvement Plan, questions from my colleagues?
I just have one quick one. How did you determine who would be on the data team?
So, I asked for volunteers first, and then once I got those, and kind of wanted to make sure I picked across different areas, so it wasn't just all filled with classroom teachers, for example. So, it's two classroom teachers, two interventionists, and two coaches at the moment, along with myself and the school psychologists.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I'm good.
I don't really have questions. I just, I just wanted to, I just, I love acronyms that really are meaningful, and that WIN acronym.
Oh, I can't take credit for that. That's been around for...
But if I could just take a minute, Mr. Porter, I just want to say thank you for your 35 years. I won't get emotional.
I may.
I just want, yeah, I probably said this a million times, maybe over, I don't know, but, you know, when I, I just remember my most precious cargo, my middle son with, you know, who was entering school at kindergarten, unable to talk, and really had complex needs, learning that your sister-in-law and you and Lorraine and Wendy were going to be at the helm, but... the helm, but knowing you really put me at ease and made that transition easy. And so I have never forgotten you for that and all lots of other stories that we don't need to share today. So I just wanted to lead with that. But that acronym, and I just had one question relative to, so I don't want to, because I might get emotional if I continue. He's going to be 22 soon, so, yeah. Or 28, what Jack Benny's age, right? There was something else, the, yeah, the fifth grade leadership program was fabulous and everything. I really could really see the strategic plan alive in this school improvement plan. That peer mentoring program, is that all of the grades, like K through five?
It could be. And it was interesting what sparked my thinking along this line is I had a fourth grader and a kindergartner both, you know, having a tough day and it was just magical to watch them work each other's stuff out. You know, the fourth grader was really relaxing because he was trying to support the kindergartner and I just never forgot that and thought, all right, somewhere we're going to, you know, work on that. And it'll obviously, you know, it's not just leaving our students with another child, you know? It's definitely supported with by our school counselors as well as the admin team, so.
Fabulous.
Yeah, we're excited.
Excellent. That's all.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
No, I'm good. It's excellent. Good job.
So I do have a couple of questions. So under focus area one, TL1, in regard to the the wind block scheduling, how did that come about? Was that organic within the building or, because I know, and I'm not sure if other schools are already doing wind blocks in the district or, I'm just curious.
It's been, it's been in place. I think we're, we're really trying to create, the feedback I was receiving, typically what we do is, at the Potter School anyway, is we give teachers their schedule, but it's really, here are your intervention blocks, so here's that wind block. And then they build everything around that. So they have the the freedom to be able to do that. The feedback we've been receiving is that's really challenging. Like, as a teacher, I would have loved that because I wanted to do what I wanted to do when I wanted to do it as a teacher, right? But now, when you're trying to create a special education schedule, you're trying to do a related service schedule, it it does complicate things. So the feedback we were receiving was, please just give us a schedule. So that was the feedback we were receiving at the same time at the district level, we were talking about building that that schedule.
Mr. Oliver, I'll just jump in there and just let you know that's work that we're doing with our elementary folks across the district. So we'll be talking more about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And if I could just ask one final question.
Sure.
Great improvement plan, by the way. I'm not sure if Mr. Porter had anything to do with it, but however, however, you certainly, you certainly contributed to, I have no doubt.
Yes, of course.
So this question is for either of you. What do you find moving forward and as your biggest challenge as building-based administrators? Is it, and, you know, be honest, i- is it staffing? Is it wishing that you could have more ESPs and, you know, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm just curious what-
I don't want to overstep my, I mean, I could-
I mean, yes, I mean, more staffing and a perfect utopia would be great. I, I think, moving ahead, and I compliment the superintendent and the building administrators that were involved in the district strategic plan. I think if we stick to that in our school improvement plans, and Melissa did a great job with that tonight, you heard Kathleen saying that you could see that plan in there. I think if you stick with that, that's what's going to be the the barometer, the map-
Yeah.
-that guides us the next few years. I mean, as you mentioned, Chris, I've been around here a long time. I've seen many district improvement plans and school improvement plans, and I'll be very honest with you, because I got two months left. They usually, you know, they usually have to have a binder and they end up on a shelf. This one does feel different and my compliments to the superintendent, she came by to our PTO meeting and we had parents that mentioned that. This just feels different. So, yeah, we could all find different things that we we need, but I think if you stay true to that plan that you worked hard on, that plan also will help you through some difficult times as well, too. It's that flexible. So that would be my advice, is stick with the plan.
And you're all working, like, all the elementary buildings are working on it together.
One Dartmouth.
Right. And that's, so again, it focuses your energy on these key initiatives and these key actions. And and so if you're all working towards it, I'm even thinking ahead when we're talking about, you know, creating student learning goals and and, you know, your professional practice goals as as staff. Like, it should be based on this. It's almost been written for you. So what, if you're doing that, the school as a whole is doing that and the district collectively, it does make things easier. Nothing's ever perfect, but but you're all working towards that same goal, so.
Well, thank you both very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, if there's no other questions, Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Potter School SIP.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Noon, second by Mrs. Amorall on the motion. Any other discussion? Chair hearing, not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Absentience, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving right along. So at this time, it's that, it's that time of the year where we have the reorganization of the committee and I'm going to turn the meeting over to our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Saban McGuire, serving in her capacity as the Superintendent and Secretary of the School Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. So at this time, we are seeking a nomination or nominations for the chairperson of the Dartmouth School Committee. Do we have a nomination?
I make a motion that we nominate Bess Coughlin as chairperson.
Second.
Sorry, Bess.
Any other nominations? Any discussion?
We got your back.
We do.
Are you willing to accept it?
I am. I'm praying.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, Bess Coughlin, congratulations, you are the chairperson of the Dartmouth School Committee.
Yeah, leave that there.
I thank you all for your support. And I will need your support this year. I will now seek any nominations for the vice chair.
Is this your second year?
Just starting.
You're just starting your second year?
Yeah.
I will make a motion to nominate Mary Beckwith as vice chair.
I second that.
I wasn't sure who was-
Guys are great.
I second that. That's great.
You don't have to accept. Do you accept?
I'll accept.
All right.
Any discussion, any other nominations?
That sounds good to me.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sounds unanimous?
Yes. There we go.
Ms. Beckwith?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Get your graduation speeches ready, ladies.
Forgot to tell them that.
I think that there should be a little more prep, like explanation. Okay, now we are looking for nominations for secretary.
Make a motion that we nominate Dr. June Saban McGuire as Secretary to the School Committee?
Second.
All in favor? Or any other nominations?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I don't even get to accept her.
No, you don't.
I knew that. Great.
So we have that done. Next up is the committees, subcommittees of this body and then town and district committees. So, policy committee, the assistant superintendent heads that, Mr. Kylie. And currently we have Kathleen Amorall and Mary Beckwith. Are you both happy doing that?
I think so.
Would you like?
I'm fine. I'm enjoying it.
Okay.
Mary's much better than I am at it, but.
I will say it's been a very active committee this year and I feel like everyone has done a great job. Fields and Facilities Committee, Chair is the superintendent, John Noons and Kathleen Amorall are current committee members. How do you two feel about continuing or not continuing?
I'm fine.
I'm fine unless somebody is dying to take it on.
I don't see anyone dying.
They're all slipping back.
Okay, Budget Committee, Mr. Kylie, of course, is in charge of that one. And currently it's Chris Oliver and myself with John Noons as backup. Is there anyone else who wants on? Is there anyone who wants off?
I'm happy to continue on that committee.
I can stay as backup, I'm fine.
You are?
You've, with all the, the two of you have done a marvelous, and I mean in all seriousness, a marvelous job with everything going on.
Thank you, Mr. Noon.
You know, so.
And we are not doing school assignments, I think decided last year, so we will skip over that.
Been a few years.
So District and Town Committee Meetings, we have the Dartmouth Education Foundation, which I was on last year. Happy to step aside if someone's very eager to be on it. It's a fun committee. We do the spelling bee. We make money for different schools here. Anyone else interested in being on the committee? I'm happy to stay on. Southeast, Southern Mass Educational Collaborative is Chris Oliver and you've been on that committee for quite a while?
For 11 years, 12 years now.
Like riding a bike?
It is, yes.
Happy to stay on there?
I'm currently the chair of the board there, so I'm happy to stay on at least probably one more year.
And then the Mass Association of School Committees, John Noons, you are currently on that, are you happy there? Would you like, we're just a very happy crowd. Negotiations representative, currently John Noons with Kathleen Amorall and Mary Beckwith as backup. How do you all feel about staying with that or does anybody want off?
I mean, I'm fine staying with it, I just do have limitations now with my, you know, with work, so I haven't been needed, but I just say that to say I would step in if I could. I'm happy to stay unless somebody would like to, you know, replace me.
And I'm happy to stay back up.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm good.
All right. This is, and we have from last year, the Town Charter Committee, which is over, so we can just skip right over that. And, oh, I did. Technology Committee, Chris Oliver.
How could you skip over the technology?
Because I, I am not a tech genius. That is how. Are you happy on it? I think you have the most knowledge of technology on this.
I'm happy to stay on it. I don't know where Mr. Galishar is right now.
Oh, maybe I should ask him if he's happy.
You could ask him if he's happy.
Is that the thumbs up?
You hauled it something.
Would you like me to stay on?
All right. That is good. And then we have the-
I'm fine if you want, if you want off. You want both of us?
Right now, there's only one. No, but-
You can add me, that's fine.
Yeah.
You want to?
Sure.
Great. All right, Mary Beckwith?
He brings the best snacks.
I wish I'd known that earlier.
I know.
Okay, Mary Beckwith is now on the Technology Committee. Town Open Space and Recreation Plan Steering Committee, currently we have John Noons as the main attender with myself being the alternate. Are you still happy with that?
Yeah, I'm fine. We haven't met in a while, but, you know, we did a lot of stuff a couple of years ago.
Right. As an alternate, I didn't hear boo about it this year.
No, nor did I, so.
Okay.
There's the rep, so.
All right. And then lastly, we have Curriculum Council and Mary Beckwith, you were on that? Did you guys meet this year?
No, I have not.
Would you, would you like to continue on that?
I would love to continue.
So then we have finished with our reorg, as it were, and old business. We are going to talk about the FY26 budget, further discussion. Mr. Kylie sent us all an updated budget. Would you like to say anything before our discussion, Mr. Kylie? Or should we just jump in?
I wanted to jump in and then, Mr. Kylie, I know had a couple of things, if that's okay. No, so I think it's important that we take the time to thank the Select Board, the Finance Committee, Gary Carrero, Jim Kylie, and the parents that we have here that I know have been incredibly supportive since really last year, when it became really clear that without some creative thinking, we were really, talk about budget challenges, we were really going to be looking at losing some really important positions in our district. But I want to say their willingness to explore solutions from multiple perspectives has been so incredibly invaluable to us and we're still navigating the town's budget, obviously. And we do have shared financial challenges and I think that's what's been so incredibly validating and important for us as we've gone through this cycle this year. It feels like, you know, we're kind of doing, we're doing it together. It's no secret, I sound like a broken record, that school costs continue to rise, that there are increasing pressures on Dartmouth's resources. But I think that we have to continue to be clear that the issue here is not about reckless spending, not that people have have in any way said that it is about that, but I think that I've read a couple of things around the way that we're allocating our funding and I just want there to be no question that our challenges are really stemming from rising special education expenses, state mandates, increased transportation costs, and the need to remain competitive in attracting and retaining high-quality educators. And I know I sound like a broken record, but I think it's important to continue to publicly state those things. These are not optional expenditures, they're necessary investments in our students and mandated obligations under state and federal law. This is a reality not just faced by us here in Dartmouth, but really in school districts across Massachusetts. And if you're reading local news or paying attention to what's going on around some of our local districts, you can see the pressures that we're all facing. We also recognize that the town has financial constraints, but we remain committed to working together to find responsible, sustainable solutions. And at the same time, we must continue to ensure that Dartmouth students receive the education they deserve. As we've heard from our families, they only get one shot at this. You know, there's one year in third grade, there's one year in fourth grade, there's one year as a senior in high school. And we want each one of those years to be very valuable, important, and we want to make sure that we're providing the best possible education for our students. Underfunding our schools has lasting consequences for students and really for the entire community, including property values and long-term economic vitality. Our kids, the kids here in Dartmouth are the future of Dartmouth. Now, this isn't a school department issue, it's a townwide conversation about priorities and how we invest in Dartmouth's future. We definitely welcome ongoing dialogue and collaboration and we're seeing that and we're excited about that. As we work toward solutions that balance fiscal responsibility- as we work toward solutions that balance fiscal responsibility with the needs of our students and our community. And that really is why we're so grateful for, in this moment, the clear collaboration that we're seeing that will assist us in moving forward and through these efforts, I know I have to mention, you know, we are One Dartmouth and that's not the school community by itself. That is us as part of the larger community. And so I think, again, I'll go back to Mr. Kylie, who has really done a tremendous job collaborating across this community. And I know that he has some things that he'd like to update you on before you make a really important vote in terms of our budget.
Thank you, Dr. Saban McGuire. So well said. You know, we are in the process of considering a budget tonight for vote. We do appreciate the support that we've had throughout this process from you folks, from our staff, and from the town, being willing to consider options as we try and move forward. What I prepared for you tonight is really solving one problem. It's definitely not solving the big picture, the things that Dr. Saban McGuire just indicated. You know, if we, if, if, if this fiscal year we had an extra $245,000, we'd be 265th in spending instead of 270th. So, just to give you an idea, that's the scope of what we're talking about. It's not a game changer. But what it will do is limit our, you know, reliance on one-time reserves over time. And it will eliminate the imminent ESER fiscal cliff that we've been, you know, extremely concerned about now for, for five years. So, I prepared a revised proposed budget for you. It's up, it's up on the screen right now. It was in your packet. The revision reflects the removal of the human resources position from the administration category of the budget. That resulted in a $120,000 decrease to the budget. It also includes the incorporation of $245,000 of the former ESER-funded positions, which are currently being funded by school choice reserves, so in fiscal year '25, those are being funded through school choice reserves. And it incorporates those into the operating budget in the instruction classroom staff category. So the overall net result is an increase of $125,000 to the proposed operating budget from what we had previously considered. And importantly, it lessens our reliance on those school choice reserves. And you'll see at the bottom line of that spreadsheet that the use of school choice reserves, our original proposal had them at using $973,000 of school choice reserves, and that is now reduced to 200, to 728,000. So, in fiscal year '26, we'll be using still a significant amount of money from school choice reserves. Hopefully, in fiscal year '27, that number will come down again by 245,000 if we stick with the plan. And then another the year after that, and so on, until we are no longer using school choice reserves to fund, you know, these important resources. So, what this also means is that the overall FY26 budget was revised to $55,478,511 and one cent, if you're willing to add that in. So it's an increase of 4.4%, which you'll probably remember, we were originally proposing a 4.1% increase over the FY25 budget. So, we've had quite a bit of positive conversation with, with the town side of government regarding this. I, I understand that certainly the finance committee will consider, you know, consider our budget. They've not, you know, we haven't voted it. They haven't formally considered our budget. And ultimately, you know, hopefully, we, we receive support and a recommendation for town meeting. So, this is where we are with this. I, again, appreciate your support through it and I think it's a good solution. And it, it solves that one major problem.
Any discussion, Mr. Oliver?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of questions, Mr. Kylie. One, the, the transfer of school choice funds into the general operating budget, what does that do? How many FTE, former ESER positions is that total?
The, the way I'm looking at it right now, it would be four.
Okay.
And it, it almost works out exactly. It, you know, it all depends on a couple of factors.
Yep.
We're in collective bargaining right now, so the rates for next year haven't been set. So, you know, it'll be part, parts of four people anyway.
Okay.
Three whole and probably a partial, but almost all of the fourth person.
And then that'll leave us with how many positions left?
We'll, we'll still have seven. Two other positions I think that will be moved in will be ESPs in the initial cycle. But, you know, it, it doesn't really, it doesn't really matter which positions are moved in.
No.
You know, it's.
Agreed.
They're all part of the overall collective bargaining group. They all have their own seniority system. And it's not like any more secure if you're being funded through this or funded through the operating budget, but, but yes.
Approximately four.
It's less, yeah, it's less positions.
Approximately four FTEs.
Yeah, it's less positions in that, in that source, so it'll be nice.
Thank you for that. And I do want to thank the finance committee members that are here this evening, as well as the finance committee as a whole. I certainly appreciate. I was pleasantly surprised this year at a joint meeting at the positive dialogue that took place. And I want to hope and believe that as a town, we're going to move in, in the right direction in, in the years to come. I will say that while this budget, I certainly am grateful for the established relationships that Mr. Kylie has with the town and the man, and the going back and forth to come to an agreement on this and through the finance committee. But at the, really, at the end of the day, to certainly some people in the audience's point, that we, we still, this really doesn't fix the larger problem, right? This doesn't fix the larger problem. We certainly, we certainly need a general operating override in, in this town. I don't care who you, who you speak to, when you look at the initial presentation, budget presentation from Mr. Kylie several, several months ago, I think, at this point now, that we're pretty much at the bottom of all categories. And I know that we can do better and this town can do better. And the town, really, at some point, we need to put it out to this community and let them decide on, is, you know, the school department a priority for everyone in this town? I would like to see, you know, with the, with, at some point in override, all the ESER positions out of, or all the school choice positions, the seven, out of there into the general operating budget. I think we need, we are going to continue to have a problem, or will, the problem will get worse with teacher retention and recruitment. I have no doubt about that, as our workforce continues to approach retirement age. So there's certainly not a lot to think about there, but I, I just hope that the, the community hears us and hears me and, you know, I hope they rally together to, you know, ask those tough questions at, at select board meetings and finance committee meetings and make a decision on whether or not I, I, you know, we need an override. I know we do. So, final question. I had a conversation with Mr. Kylie briefly regarding, you know, in the past, we've had conversations at joint meetings regarding, we have this account or that account. Last year, the elephant in the room was the school choice account, even though we spoke about it at great lengths at multiple meetings. This school choice was the elephant in the room and we're hiding all kinds of school choice money, I think one person said. So, we know that's not the case. We've been as transparent as I think we're, we're ever going to be about school choice. The conversation I had with Mr. Kylie was around the, the kindergarten stabilization fund, that there is approximately, I believe, $250,000.
Three hundred.
Three hundred, $300,000 in the kindergarten stabilization fund. That also came up last year, not this year, not this year for sure, because we, you know, we're moving in the right direction. But it certainly came up last year. And, you know, from my point of view, it's a stabilization fund. It need, I believe it needs, I don't know what, what it stays in the charter or the town, but it needs a, a joint vote by us and the select board, I think, and a town meeting vote in order to access it. So I certainly, you know, have no problem, you know, having conversations with finance committee members, with select board members, you know, if, if they have a need for it, I'm willing to reach across the table and work with them. So I just wanted to put that out on the table, that those conversations had, had, we've had those. And reach out. We're happy to talk. We don't bite. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Anyone else? Mr. Noons?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The elephant in the room, the, the, boy, which one do I start with? I'll try to be nice here. The kindergarten fund, the $300,000, we put that aside a lot of years ago for just that, you know, never needed it. In my opinion, if we were going to use it, use it for something for like a one-time shot, okay? Don't, don't, you know, if, it, it's almost like the school choice. If we're plugging the operating budget with school choice funds, it's one time and, you know, it's gone.
Yep.
Type of deal. So, you know, something one time that we would need it to do, that's, I think that's, that's what we needed to do. You know, as far as, you know, I agree with you, Chris, no, we didn't hide school choice. We had free money from the government. Hello? If, if it's free, it's for me. Let's use, use that first. That's what it was meant to. We didn't, we don't, and we're not, like a lot of other communities, that didn't spend it and have to send it back, you know? We did an excellent job of doing what we did. And again, I know I've said it a bazillion times, we said from day one that we were going to watch, September 30th to 24th, we were going to walk that plank, okay?
We certainly did.
Okay, so that's what was going to happen and we knew it, but we had to take care of kids and we did. And we did, and that, that's fine. I personally still would like to see the HR person, I, I'll be honest with you, but I will swallow my pride and bite my tongue and I will vote for this budget. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Noons?
I think everyone said what I'm thinking, including our public, the public that spoke, you know, this, this budget doesn't fix, you know, the issue. It's a compromise. You know, yes, a budget really reflects your values. And in the spirit of compromise, we've, we've done our due diligence and appreciative of all of the work that Mr. Kylie has done and the town for really hearing us, our finance committee and, and such. But it's still a compromise and one that says it's okay that we underfund education in this community. And to me, that says we don't want new families, we don't want young families, we don't want kids entering our schools. That's what that says to me, is that if you, you know, putting money where your priorities are. And so, I don't know, I don't feel, I feel better about this version of the budget. I don't feel good about it. Yeah, and I don't need to go on. Every, other people have said my thoughts in a more eloquent way, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anything?
Yeah, I, I agree with Kathleen that I think that we've done our part this year and I think that this is probably as good as we can do, but I think we have to think immediately about the coming years. And, and I do think, and I don't know how it happens to, how the whole override idea is introduced and how we talk with the community about that, or who talks to the community about that, but I think this, this is as good as we can do. Like Kathleen said, we've done our due diligence. Mr. Kylie did a superb job. And, but I think we need to put this one to bed and then go on to the next one right away.
Thank you.
Twenty-six and twenty-seven's around the corner.
Exactly.
So, I agree with everything that's said up there and, and yes, I would like to see an HR director. I would also like to not forget the unfunded requests and acknowledge, yes, we are losing staff by retirements and whatnot. So it's not really a level-funded budget. I appreciate all the comments that we have gotten from the public. I wish more people would speak up. I think that this is a responsible budget, but it certainly does not reflect how I view education or how I believe our community values it, or I hope they do. So yes, as Nate Silva said, this only solves one problem. It doesn't solve the whole issue. We do need to ask the community for more money and it does occur to me that there is never a good time to do that. Hindsight says last year or the year before was the time to do it. But just because it's not the good time doesn't mean that, yes, we need to jump on it and we need to do it. And if the community says no, the community says no, but hopefully, the silent majority agrees. So, if there's no more discussion, are we ready to take a vote? Do I hear a motion? We need to do it in several parts. Do I hear a motion to start this?
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the FY26 budget appropriation for part of school classroom teachers in the amount of $2,050,283.14.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Noons, second by Ms. Beckwith. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will abstain.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. So four guesses and one abstention. And we need a second motion?
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the FY26 budget appropriation for the total budget excluding the item voted individually in the previous motion in the amount of $53,428,227.87.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Noons, second by Mr. Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Good job.
Good job. Thank you.
Appreciate your support.
And on to new business. I believe I pass this along to Mr. Kylie.
Well, thank you. So, we have a list of surplus equipment. So we're seeking authorization to dispose of this equipment and materials that have surpassed their useful life. The condition varies. Some are not operational, some are barely operational. All are not serving, serving the purpose that they were intended to at this point. This will allow us to dispose of the surplus according to the town's policy for doing so. We actually, the town of Dartmouth has a policy for disposal of surplus equipment and we follow that. We, the school committee actually doesn't have its own policy, but we could consider one. So first, as part of that policy, we would ask other town departments if they are interested in any of it. I would love it if they would take it. I don't think they will. I would love it if they would take it, I don't think they will. Uh, the stuff that I'm going to list is like rotting away and not in great shape, so I don't think anybody's going to take it off our hands, um, but we will attempt to auction it off. And some of the things might be bought for parts, or the value of the metal, or something. Um, so hopefully, if that happens, if, if it does, the funds that we would receive, there'll be an online auction, um, and the funds that we receive will go to the town. So I'm going to just talk a little bit about the equipment, um, and be happy to answer any questions you might have. So it's equipment and some, and some, uh, educational materials. So various Dartmouth Middle School weight room equipment. I can talk a lot about, no, I can talk a little bit at least, about the items if you'd like, um, but I'll leave that to your discretion whether you want me to do that or not. Plexiglass of various sizes, I can't imagine where we got all this plexiglass, but, um, we have tons of plexiglass, like I'm storing it in storage containers that we're renting.
That's not good.
So, no, it isn't, and we're never going to use it again, and I can't do anything with it, so.
And it's costing us money.
It's costing us money every month, and I'm, yeah, so anyway, please declare that surplus. Um, old, old classroom desks and chairs, also things that we stored at the time of the pandemic, when we were trying to social distance and all that, s- put in, put in storage containers, and then nooks and crannies, and needs to go. Um, a Donaldson turret dust collector, which is at the high, Dartmouth High School, it's actually attached to the building, it's around the backside of the building, the back north side of the building. Um, it's never operated in my tenure, so I'm in year fifteen, so, um, I don't know. It, it's not operational, it's not going to be operational, we don't have a use for it, even if it was operational, so, um, I'd recommend we declare that surplus and get rid of it. A Grove scissor lift that is not operational, that's out near the track, it's, it's rotting away, um, as we speak. The Ford four, uh, four, Ford Econoline vans that I purchased in two thousand twelve, um, for student transportation, we can no longer, those would never pass like school bus inspection, and they're sitting down at the parking lot behind the stadium. Uh, two Ford E-three-fifty vans from two thousand eight that are not operational, um, and outdated ELA and math curriculum materials, so things that don't align with the standards that have been sitting around in closets, and people walking around them and saying, when are we ever going to get rid of these? Um, so those are the things that I'd respectfully request your consideration on, and, um, like I said, we will first offer them up to other folks, uh, the town departments. When that doesn't work, we will, uh, we will attempt to auction them off and see if we can, see if we can get any money for the town, for any of them.
Thank you for that. Um, any questions, discussions on that?
No.
All right, um.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we, uh, dis- declare surplus, the equipment as listed in the memo from our Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operation dated April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Um, motion by Mr. Nunes, second by Ms. Ameral. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, just to segue, you said that maybe we should have our own rules about surplus?
The town, I'm sorry.
Yeah, um.
The, um, the town's policy complies with the law, um, so for items valued less than ten thousand dollars, uh, there, the town can, can, oh, can re- remove and dispose of this, uh, these type of materials, um, in as long, in any way, as long as they have a written policy to do so. If it's more than ten thousand, which I assure you, none of this, I wish it was, I wish these were worth more than ten thousand, but none, none of these things, probably all of these things together, I'm almost a hundred percent sure are not going to be ten thousand dollars. Um, so, um, if it's more than ten thousand, you have to follow Massachusetts law, uh, chapter thirty B for disposal of property, it's like you gotta seek bids and do all that. Now, we can, we can still follow that law, which is what we're going to do for the majority of this stuff, like I probably, I, I think I'm even going to list the plexiglass, uh, on an auction, and see if maybe there's somebody out there who wants two, two or three trailers full of plexiglass.
Oh, my God.
Um, we've done it, we've used it for lots of things, projects in the schools and things like that, but there's, you know, you can only use so much of that stuff, so. So, um, we'll attempt to auction it off, we don't really have to by the law, we could just dispose of it, but it might, it might produce a little bit of money for the town. So, um, there's like a website that you can use, and people can go on. If anyone's interested, it's govdeals.com, and we'll be listing everything, and, and then, uh, see what happens.
Um, so would it be less hassle if we had our own rule and we didn't bother the town, or is it less hassle just to do it all with the town?
It's fine, I mean, I, I love the idea of being able to, like, for instance, we have had, and it's been a long time, but like, we, we, um, disposed of a van many years ago to the police department, um, who needed a van just to run, I think it was to run, um, cadets to the academy back and forth, and we had a spare van, it wasn't going to be, it wasn't going to pass inspection for, as a school bus, but it could pass street inspection, and we went through the process, you know, we, you declared it surplus, the committee declared a surplus, and we gave it to the police department. So, I mean, it's fine. In the spirit of collaboration, I have no problem using that and asking the departments, it's just that I have a bunch of junk here that nobody's going to want, so.
Okay.
That's.
Well, thank you for that. Um, next up, I turn this over to Dr. Saban McGuire on the twenty-twenty-five summer sports camp.
I'm actually going to hand that right back to Mr. Kylie, since I know he drafted his, the, um, the notice in your, for your packet.
Thank you. So, um, we, you had in your packet, um, a memorandum and a analysis of the, um, pro- last year's summer sports camp, pretty successful camp, so we're seeking your approval to once again operate, um, the summer sports camp for students entering grades two through nine. The camp will run from June sixteenth through July twenty-fifth, it's nine AM to twelve PM. We are planning to offer baseball, softball, field hockey, flag football, basketball, volleyball, soccer, track and field, and physical education games, so a pretty wide, wide variety. Uh, we are proposing that there be no increase in, in fee, um, so last year and, and again this year, it will be eighty dollars for the five-day weeks, and sixty-five dollars for the two four-day weeks, the June, the Juneteenth week and the July fourth week, um, our four-day weeks. So, uh, the nine offerings that we had last year, we had three hundred and sixty-six campers attend, um, and last year we earned a profit of six thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and eighty-six cents, and that was after buying a, quite a, quite a lot of popsicles for the kids. So, um, we, again, didn't raise the price, and we propose that any profit earned will, uh, will support the, um, phys ed and athletic programs in the district.
Thank you for that. Do we have any questions? Yes, Ms. Ameral?
I don't have a question, um, just my, every year, uh, I, um, I noticed that the camps run from June sixteenth through July twenty-fifth, and, uh, grateful for the effort made over the years, but it still needs to be said that I just want to make sure that there are, you know, that those offerings do happen in June, so allow for those students who, um, require, um, extended year services so that they can, um, participate. I know when my kiddo was little, it would have been important, those off weeks, that a basketball camp was there, so, not that other sports aren't fun, but like having some, some of those higher attended, perhaps, a little earlier in June, would be my suggestion to make sure that those students, um, with special education needs and, and learning needs during the summer can participate. That's all.
Mr. Kylie?
Yeah, no, thank you, I, I, you know, we've, we have talked about that in the past, and it is tricky because our camp does run nine to twelve, and, and, um, you know, is, is partially overlapping with all of our summer programs, so it definitely eliminate, you know, limits the opportunity for kids, um, to participate, and we attempt, you know, we're starting early, um, very early this year, uh, you know, right after, um, school gets done, we'll be starting up the camp the, the following week, so, um, but we'll certainly take that into consideration, and we do our best to, you know, make it accessible for folks.
Any other comments, discussion, questions?
Nope. Make a, hm? Make a motion that we approve the, uh, summer sports camp as presented?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nunes, second by Ms. Beckwith. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
And next up, Greater New Bedford Regional Vocational Technical High School, um, discussion of Dr. Cynthia Marland, whose term is coming to an end and wishes to, um, continue to serve. So, do we need to vote on that? Is that us?
Yes, so, um, if you don't mind, Madam Chair.
Yeah, please.
Uh, so we received correspondence, uh, dated March seventeenth from Superintendent Schools, Michael Watson of New Bedford Voke. Um, essentially, we have two members, uh, that represent the town of Dartmouth on the New Bedford Vocational School Committee. Those members are appointed jointly, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Nunes, we have three members.
No, um, we have two. Yeah, no, it's, it is, it's the school committee, the, technically, it's the chairman of the school committee, the Board of Selectmen, and the town moderator that vote.
So it's a, it's a joint vote, but historically, in the time that I've been here, this committee, essentially, w- w- it's a collaborative thing, we vote and then notify, um, the select board and town moderator that the school committee, uh, supports, uh, Dr. Cindy, uh, Dr. Cindy Marland, um, as our representative, and then it's in them, it's in their, uh, hands to decide, you know.
Where to go.
Where to go from there. Um, but as you can see, she has, uh, out of forty-nine meetings, she's attended forty-nine school committee meetings, um, and.
Pretty good.
They typically, her and Mr. Shea is our other representative, and, uh, they typically, uh, you know, at any time, they'll, uh, they certainly will come to our meetings, um, to present on, um, you know, things that are going on at Voke, in which I, I would actually love to see them here.
Yeah.
Uh, because of the, uh, the lottery, I have so, lots of questions around the lottery that just took place today, um, there, but that's for another day.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that we, um, we, we vote to, uh, reappoint, uh, Dr. Cindy Martlin to the Greater New Bedford Regional Vocational Technical High School School Committee.
Second.
Uh, motion by Ms. Ameral, second by Ms. Beckwith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, and then I have a question, if it's the chair, like, who do I report to? This one?
The superintendent, the superintendent will notify, for, central office will notify the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
And they'll, if they need to have a meeting, then they will get in touch.
Okay, terrific. And now I'd like to turn this over to the superintendent, Dr. Saban McGuire.
Thank you so much.
For joyous news, I'm sure.
Of course.
Always is.
This is always the best part, right? Um, so talking about teach, starting with talking about teaching and learning, um, but before I even jump into that, I just want to say that, that when I think about teaching and learning and connect it to school improvement plans, that I hope that you can see, and I, I can see that you do, how closely connected our district strategic plan is to our school improvement plans, and so I'm reporting out that we held third of four professional development sessions with CKLA today, um, or, I shouldn't say today, but recently, to train our elementary educators on our new literacy program, and you've been hearing about that really since last year, how we did two pilots this year, made our, I mean, between last year and this year, made a selection, and now we can see how that's translating into the professional learning and the support for our teachers that they're going to need in order to be able to successfully implement a resource, and, and we're thinking very carefully about how we're going to be able to do that effectively, and you heard tonight even, um, mi- you heard through the Potter School Improvement Plan, how they're thinking about professional learning systems and structures, even down to what a win, what I need now block can look like, and how we'll best be able to support our students as we, um, implement a new initiative. And so we're also working with our elementary administrators, and that collaboration's so important, on the program features, because we want our school leaders to be able to understand how schedu- how important scheduling is to the successful implementation of a resource, and what the classroom look for is are, so that they're able to effectively support our teachers in the implementation of this resource. Um, the other thing that I have to say is going really well by all accounts, is that MCAS is in full swing, and we have had new, a new technology platform that we're using, and Mr. Galishaw and the folks out there supporting our teachers and our students with this new, uh, technology have reported that overall it's gone, it's gone pretty well. And Mr. Oliver, I'm sure you can attest to that as well. Um, so, and that can be a big deal, shifting from a platform that we've used for years and years to a brand-new one, but so far, uh, we've heard some pretty po- we've gotten some positive feedback. Uh, so ELA testing at the elementary level, again, I want to talk about consistency, all of the ELA testing, uh, in grades three to five is done, right? So that is something that I want to thank, again, Katie Paveo and our principals, in coming together to schedule in a way that was consistent across the school district, and so that we know our students and our teachers are having similar experiences. Math testing starts the week after vacation, our elementary students are in the process of making their, I can't believe I'm saying this, but I know, summer reading selections. And so I've been reading emails at the high sc- from the high school level and across the elementary and middle school level, and already, uh, that, uh, has been put into place in terms of starting to think about how we can best support students and keep them reading over the summer. We're thanking our PTOs at the elementary level, who are really gracious in the way that they use the fundraising that they do throughout the year to help offset the cost of, of programming, and making sure that every one of our kids goes home with a book to read over the summer. Um, at middle, sort of high school, we know that the Dartmouth Public Schools is once again going to be participating in a regional civic showcase. If you remember last year, they were recognized, and, uh, I think that that was a real positive, they got to present their civics projects to community experts and get feedback. Last year, the middle school students received commendation. This year, we have two teams who will be participating both at the middle and high school level, and this year's regional showcase is going to be at UMass Dartmouth on May twenty-seventh. Um, so middle school is holding their own showcase tomorrow, where all the eighth-grade teams are going to have an opportunity to present. Uh, so tomorrow afternoon at the secondary level, the ELA and math vertical teams, again, I hope you hear how this is connected to our strategic plan, it's about that vertical planning. We have our ELA and math vertical teams working around aligning our curriculum, instruction, and assessment practices, uh, six to twelve, which is a key focus of our strategic plan. The playbook initia- initiative, the final workshop will be held right after April vacation. Uh, the focus of this workshop is to help middle school students, the participants, to identify and advocate for an action that they would like to take place in their school, and the focus is around inclusivity and belonging at the middle school level. Under budget and capital improvement, I know Jim and I talked earlier, and he does have some things that he'd like to update you around the work that's happening with the capital improvement planning team.
Thank you, Dr. Saban McGuire. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm pleased to report on the progress of the long-term capital improvement, uh, planning committee that is, uh, in place at the town level. at the town level. Um, so they're preparing a presentation for town meeting. It's going to include projects at Dartmouth High School, Dartmouth Middle School, DeMello School, Potter School, Quinn School, and, and Dartmouth Memorial Stadium. Um, Dartmouth High School being the, the roof and windows, uh, project that you, you folks have already supported, uh, you know, in regards to the MSBA submission and, and the select board also supported. Um, we haven't heard back yet, by the way, from MSBA. It's kind of early, um, on that one. Uh, the middle school being, figuring out a, you know, replacement, um, or renovation of, of Dartmouth Middle School. Same thing with Potter, DeMello, Quinn, and work at the stadium. So all of those projects are going to be included in the long-term plan. One topic that's come up, uh, is the possibility of, uh, so the town, uh, was exploring a recreation center. Um, and one of, uh, the, we're talking about a standalone recreation building. There was even some design work done for that. Um, and it, it seems, part of the discussion at the long-term capital improvement planning committee level is to consider if there's any way with a school project, so if we were to proceed with, let's say, replace Dartmouth Middle School, um, to add recreation space to that project, that could be, there, there's an understanding that would have to be funded by the town separately, but could be incorporated into that, um, construction footprint and, and possibly used. That one of the things, which, you know, I said, we're not committing us to anything, but we'd certainly be willing to talk about that possibility. The, the, um, you know, important thing to think about too, is if we were to build a new building at some point, um, that would also potentially free up space at the existing high school, this high school, Jim, for use by other groups. If we were to build a new high school, let's say. Um, so there's things to think about, but just so you're aware, that, that kind of conversation is happening, uh, in relation to the recreation center and whether there might be a better way to approach that. Um, let's see. So, um, I'll share a little more information with the presentation as it gets closer to being finalized. Um, they are also proposing a series of public forums following town meeting. So, um, at town meeting, there'd be a brief presentation, no more than 10 minutes, and, um, then a schedule in which the school projects would have a forum, the DPW projects would have a forum, and then other town projects would have a forum. Um, they're talking about sometime over the summer for that. Uh, so I can keep you posted with some potential dates and we can, you know, we can talk about that. They were originally talking about possibly August for the school portion of the forum, which is fine by me. And I don't know if you folks have any thoughts about that, but, you know.
Mr. Oliver?
Question. Uh, for the long-term committee, are there, who, what are the stakeholders that make up that committee?
Well, it's, it's an interesting part of the discussion, because they've been talking recently about expanding, um, membership of that committee. A school committee member doesn't sit on that committee. I'm, I'm representing the school department on that committee.
I have all the faith in the world in you, but I, but I think that, you know, the discussions that you're having, I think warrant, um, a member of the committee at the table.
Right. And I, and I have referenced, uh, to that group, that I can't represent the school committee and that I can only bring back information to the school committee. I can, you know, represent the views of the school department, but, you know, not, not the, the committee, not the will of the committee. Um, so they, they understand that and are at the point where I think they're, they, we've been discussing expanding membership to include committee members, um, the school committee member to sit on that committee.
Thank you.
Um, so, um, so August for a potential, um, forum on school projects, would that be something that the committee would, would, you know, would be comfortable with? Um, I'll let them know that, yeah, we can, you know, probably work out a date in August for that. It'll be nice to express our needs. And I'm, I'm thankful for the work that everyone's done on that committee in sort of making sure that the major interests of the taxpayers of the town are represented. And I, I think it's been a, a very productive, you know, start to this whole thing. Um, the other thing regarding capital improvements is, uh, at annual town meeting, we've been informed that it looks like, uh, there's, there's almost no free cash available. Um, they used, allocated almost all of that in October. Uh, so what I believe will, uh, will happen is the fire alarm system for DeMello and Potter, which I currently have out to bid, um, will, that will, the proposal is that funds will be transferred from the long-range capital planning stabilization reserve account to fund that, which is a solution, and it's fine. And then in October, they could always take free cash and put it back into that reserve fund. Um, so if that gets the project done, because otherwise, we will not get the project done. Uh, and I know the fire depart, fire chiefs have concerns about that. And we've gone through all of this work, creating bid documents, putting it out to bid, and, uh, hoping to get this project done over the summer. It would have to wait a whole nother summer. Can't do it during school time. So the good news is that it looks like, hopefully, that will happen. Um, and then the only other thing that, that I believe is going to be considered for funding is $50,000 of the $250,000 that we asked for, for technology hardware replacement. Everything else we have on the list, and we had a lot on the list, is not up for consideration at this point because of the funding. So, you know, we had $13 million worth of, worth of items, including the high school roof, which obviously is in process and, and that's, you know. But the other items on the list that, that, you know, is the rest of the technology hardware replacement, security upgrades, which I'll talk about in a second, high school track reconstruction, um, flooring, uh, removal of asbestos flooring, which I really feel is pretty important too. Um, HVAC repairs and replacement, playground improvements, school bus replacement, and, and addressing the, the stadium issue. Um, so, you know, those were the items on the list. And, and I know they had a limited pool of funds. So I do appreciate them thinking outside of the box to potentially fund the fire alarm at least. But that's where we are with capital improvements.
So, um, I'm just going to mention that under HR, as you know, we're still hiring for several of our leadership, we're still interviewing for several of our leadership positions, including the assistant principals at the Potter Middle School. This is in process, as well as an associate principal at the high school. I am pleased to share that we have, I just reviewed, um, some of the, the candidate qualifications. And I believe that we have several highly qualified candidates. Uh, I truly appreciate the time that, an effort of Katie Paveo, Ross Tebault alongside Peter Rossi, Ryan Shea, Audra Thomas, Melissa McHenry, and the many school-based folks who have been part of this, because it is time and it is effort. And there has to be a thoughtfulness about this process, because hiring for these positions is really critical to the overall success of our schools and our school district. And so we're going to keep working at it until we find the right people, um, for the right positions, for the right schools. So that's where we are in terms of hiring. And really, once we have that process done, we have to start the process of now that, you know, we're hopefully moving forward with our budget, that we have some positions that we're going to be looking to fill outside of those leadership positions in the district. Under family and community engagement, tomorrow, actually, the, um, the BIT department is hosting a career fair for the fair for the junior class, starting at one o'clock, which is really exciting. The career fair will extend into after-school hours for students until about 2:30. There'll be over 50 local businesses and institutions for the students to interact with, to help with the internship selections for next year. And, uh, some of our students will be hired for some summer positions. So that's really exciting for students to plan for their internship and local summer employment opportunities. I also want to mention that Dartmouth Natural Resource Trust continues to communicate with us and offer some opportunities for our families, uh, over, over the vacation. Again, we think that this is really important for us to connect with our families, to let them know what are the opportunities that are available right here in town for our students. Uh, there are some things going on during vacation. They're going to be working on cleaning up the Knolls, Payden Air Reserve and surrounding area. We're sending things home through the backpack, um, to let families know about this. And this doesn't sound fun, but, uh, there is also a snake scavenger hunt. But that's kicking off, yeah. So I, I, yeah. So I don't think they're real snakes, though. So there's that. Um, so, but the important part of that is for us to continue to reach out to the local community resources and connect our students and our families to those resources. Under safe and supportive schools, I know the high school is working and focused on recognizing student attendance and tardies and really trying to improve that. And I appreciate that there's a team of folks up here who are actively working toward finding some solutions to what is a really, uh, I think, a, a challenge, not only here in Dartmouth, but again, I'll say, throughout the state. I hear it, um, everywhere I go, from different superintendents and then just anything that you read. But they have partnered with Dunkin'. And if you're paying any attention, high school kids definitely are at the Dunkin' counter and in the drive-throughs. And it's definitely a favorite. And so one of the things they're doing for students who qualify is entering them into a lottery and they're getting, um, a gift card to Dunkin'. So we appreciate, again, there's, your, I say safe and supportive schools here, because it gets kids into school where they're safe and we know that they're, they're the right support. So it's making those connections and making them really clear about why we do these things. We want our students in school. And Jim is also going to give you an update on some steps we've taken, again, in partnership with local law enforcement and some of the outcomes that we've had because of that work together.
Thank you, Dr. Saban McGuire. So, um, you know, we appreciate, um, Chief Levecq and the Dartmouth Police Department, who've arranged for us to have the Department of Homeland Security come down and do a, um, security safety assessment of our facilities. So, um, they've been able to do five of the buildings, uh, so far. Um, their recommendations, I, I guess I would say are, are, I'd characterize them as practical and informative and, um, things that are actionable, um, with typically a relatively low investment. Mostly, the investment is, is time and effort. Um, there are some things that we would hope to, to upgrade in the buildings. Um, I mentioned in our capital improvement plan that we have, we had a request for security improvements. And part of that is to implement these, uh, these, these recommendations. So we hope that, you know, in October, we'll, we'll get some funding for that and be able to implement them. But Mrs. McHenry, tonight in presenting the school improvement plan, mentioned that, um, you know, they're actively working on, uh, expanding how they train, um, you know, and how, train staff and students in emergency situations like a reverse evacuation. Those are the practical type of things that are offered in the report. Um, really just helpful for us to, things to consider as we, um, continue our planning and our district crisis planning as well, which we're actively working on, so.
And so that's really all we have for you tonight. So, thank you. Lots of exciting things happening, though. You know, it's spring. We just had Once Upon a Mattress. I know that. They just had the musical at the middle school. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to go, but I did hear that, as usual, the production was outstanding. And I know Mr. Rossi had a part in it. I'm sorry I missed that. Um, but looking forward to all of the great things that happen here in Dartmouth during this spring season.
Thank you for that. Um, I have nothing to report today, but does anybody else? Mr. Nunes?
Thank you. Let's see, since we've met, uh, between the band and Calligard, but first and foremost, do we have a status on if and when we're going to see any minutes from the Befford, Greater New Bedford Voke?
No, but we will follow up.
Okay. Cause we haven't, I, I can't remember. I don't know if it was like September or October, we got some. But, you know, maybe then that. So, we haven't seen any since. So if we could follow up on that, that'd be wonderful. Thank you. Uh, let's see. The, uh, it was a busy month of March for the band and even into April. Uh, the Calligard took, in the NSBA finals, Calligard took first place in their, uh, their competition, their finals up in, uh, Reading. And then went out to WGI in, in Dayton two weeks ago. And, uh, unfortunately, uh, didn't get out of the, the prelims by mere tenths of points type of deal. You can't beat the guy with the pencil, I guess. Uh, our percussion, uh, also took first place in, uh, the NSBA show that we hosted here, uh, beginning of April. And, uh, just this past Thursday, Friday, Saturday, we're at the, uh, WGI championships in Dayton. And they came in ninth. So they had a, a good showing out there. And I know our concert band was up at Micah, uh, two weeks ago. Uh, I don't know how they did. I have to find out. But everybody's getting busy and May is going to be concert month. So here we go again. That's all I have, man.
Thank you, Mr. Nunes. Anybody else? Nope. Okay. Um, our next regular meeting of the school committee is scheduled for Monday, May 5th.
Yeah, I'll be in New Hampshire.
2024 at 6:00 PM, right here in the Dartmouth School Library and Media Center, um, as well as you can live stream it on youtube.com slash DHSTVmedia. Um, and at this time, I look for a, no, yeah, a motion, uh, to-
Adjourn into-
Adjourn into executive pursuant to MGLC 30A 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, where an open meeting would have detrimental effects on the school committee's bargaining position, DAA and DEA.
Madam Chair, make a motion, we adjourn into executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining, as you mentioned, and not return to open session.
Second?
Uh, motion by Mr. Nunes, second by Mr. Oliver. Roll call, please, Ms. Nutter.
Kathleen Ameral?
Yes.
John Nunes?
Yes.
Mary Beckwith?
Yes.
Miss Coughlin?
Yes.
Chris Oliver?
Yes.